Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting, everybody. We are being recorded. I just found this out. Start with approval of the minutes from last meeting. I move that we approve them. For two meetings, you have two meetings.
Correct.
Yep. Uh, second.
Any discussion, Joe?
No.
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Bill for doing that. Mayor Communication, anything other than thirty-two B and what's on the agenda? Public speak, anybody here to speak on anything other than thirty-two B? Great. We're gonna start with some new business, promised clerk. She needs eight hundred dollars, which is approved by the president of the council, who happens to be to my left. For advertising budget, we had to print large bond advertising. I abs- obviously, we have to keep printing our public hearings or we can't have them.
Yeah, you have like two hundred and seventy-seven dollars left for the rest of the year.
So this will cover us for the rest of the year?
Yes. This shows where you are right now.
The other one, yep, you should give us that.
Yeah, I gave that.
The expanded funds.
There it is.
Well, I certainly-
If you look on the second page, you'll see how the, you know, the monthly amounts are.
Wow, one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the gazette. Oh, no, no, that's expanded. Five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, the one for five thirty, that was-
That's the biggie.
But then there was also the other park borrowing one, and there were other, there were more than one thing on that, but the average is, like, as you can say, about a hundred and forty-five dollars for just a couple supplementals.
Okay, well, I have no problem with this. Any questions?
Yeah, no, it, it looked fine to me. I had a couple of questions, but actually this irons it all out.
And any that's left just goes back.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, I had, the math wasn't adding up from the first part of it. Now it-
Well, you are a math diar.
I am a math diar. I sit at home and just crunch numbers, so it, now it makes sense, 'cause that was what I was missing.
The five dollars.
Yep.
I have a motion then to approve.
Uh, second.
All in favor, two to zero.
Aye.
Okay. Set a public hearing for this for March third. Next thing is the council budget. Council budget, as far as I know, you've added funds to supplement. Two items were added for this year's consideration.
Want me to go over it?
Um, sure.
Okay. So the city councilors, of course, that's set at four thousand for nine. The clerk of the council, I, I think it's good to budget for two meetings on, all year round, in case you have specials. So that's where the thirty-two forty comes in. And then down in expenses, advertises is legal advertisement, and prices keep going up, and it's hard to, it's hard to estimate, so that's, I went up on that, but you can adjust that if you feel it, you want to.
I don't feel we should. I'm sure the mayor might, but-
Yeah.
It's, it's small, small dollars, but it is important.
It does add up.
So you're only, like, going up a hundred, am I reading this right?
It's five hundred.
Oh, oh, okay.
For the, for the advertising.
Advertising for twenty-twenty, right, right, okay.
Well, the budget was eighteen hundred, that's more than that, it's nine hundred dollars, or more than that.
Yeah, right, but I was looking at nineteen to nineteen versus nineteen to twenty.
And then you've asked for-
So this is the new Minute Book? Like I said, this, this book started in two thousand and eleven, and we, this is book nineteen. So even though everything is digital, I think it's really good to have it in paper as well for longevity and, you know, down the road, who knows what electronic media there will be, but you can always read paper.
Where is this located? Holdovers? I'm not seeing it in the budget.
It's under, it goes under office supplies.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're, yes, office supplies, so-
Oh, I see, five twenty-five.
Yeah.
So how much is that book?
Uh, two, two, two twenty-five.
Three hundred.
Yeah, and um, plus shipping, and if you wanna, wait, pick up how much it is, I think we have to have enough in there for shipping, too, so-
I certainly don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, it lasts a long time. I'm not, so in here are all the city council meetings, and whenever I have something given to me electronically, like an ordinance, or all the certificates appropriation, meaning your money votes, those are all, I attach them all on here. It also includes all the elections and the results, include that with the warrants, so those are all in here, too, which is what was always the case. These books go way back for town meeting, it would be a town meeting records, but it would also be election records, so I just kept the same thing going. They're all indexed, and people come in looking for stuff all the time. So I think it, I think, you know, we need to keep going with it.
I certainly don't have a problem. I don't have a problem also with just repeating our mission statement and overview the mayor requested. I mean, it's simple, city council has one job.
Yeah, you can add to that if you want, but-
Do you wanna add to any of this? Don't wanna add to this thing.
Um, as far as the plaques and nameplates for outgoing people, I just took what we spent for Councilor Carey and Bill's new plate, and I, I figured to guess at three, but there could be less, there could be more. That's what I went for.
JP, we're talking about the council budget.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with submitting this to the full council for approval. Bill, you?
Nope.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Was there any discussion about in-state travel?
We haven't, and we haven't done that for years.
Well, it was done in sixteen. This is a, an account which allows councilors to go to meetings such as the MMA conference, and I think it makes sense to have some small amount of money available for councilors to be able to meet with other councilors throughout the state.
We talked about it before, that it would have to be a fairly good an amount, or we're only gonna cater to one trip, one counselor. I mean, it should be-
Or a few. I mean, it probably should be more. I would advocate for there to be funds.
I could go either way, what do you think, Bill?
Well, it's a hundred bucks in twenty sixteen, I mean, if we're looking to add a hundred dollars to it, we can-
It's not really for everybody.
How much did it cost you, Tom, to go to MMA? Probably a lot more than a hundred dollars.
Registration was like two hundred, and then I got there, and the person I was gonna crash on their couch fell through, so I got a hotel, which was like another hundred and forty or something.
Still three hundred times-
Plus the, the mileage, if I were expensing that through my state job, you know, it's fifty cents or something, and change a mile, so two hundred miles, if you're looking at a hundred bucks right there.
So just that one trip would be about twenty-five hundred dollars for the whole council.
If one, you know, if every counselor did a trip, not everyone does, but I think there should be some sort of budget that could be allocated.
But how do you distribute that?
Say two hundred and fifty dollars.
If you distribute it-
It's not distributed, it's on a, on a request, I would say as a, on a, on a request basis. So particularly the new councilors who are going out to the MMA conference, I think is important. I think if, so, I would advocate that we have a small fund somewhere between two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars for that expense.
I think it's valuable for the MMA conference. We can try, see what the mayor says.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can afford, certainly pay for everybody. I don't think it's a stroke, we can afford to pay the complete expenses for even one counselor, but I think MMA is important meeting, and I think it's, as, as Tom did last time, to be able to report back on some of the things he learned, I think is really beneficial for the whole council, so, you know, even if we help defray some of the costs-
Yeah, twenty-five dollars tied to all counselors, two hundred and fifty dollars or whatever.
Yeah, or I'd rather have a, you know, and if one person wants to go, they get two hundred dollars, that's fine.
One hundred dollars each.
Hundred dollars each? Nine hundred bucks?
Uh, let's, let's just, I, I, I'd be willing to go with five hundred. Let's just do that for now.
I second.
I'll make a ma- uh, I'll make a motion to amend to three hundred dollars.
We have a motion to amend to three hundred, discussion?
No one seconded it, huh?
I'll second.
Uh, yeah, three hundred seems good.
Okay, so all in favor of three hundred dollars?
Aye.
Oh, I, what am I voting for, sorry?
You can't vote. JP, are you gonna vote no?
I'm gonna vote no.
So I can't, I can't even make that amendment.
You can make the motion, you just can't vote on it.
He can't make the amendment?
I can, I can, 'cause I'm not even on, I mean, JP is here.
You're on the committee, but you can't vote on it. That's the only rule we have.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter, I mean, I would make a motion.
I mean, I, I, that's fine.
So now we make a mo- the amendment, it's been, the mos- lah! The budget has been changed to three hundred dollars, all in favor of three hundred dollars for travel.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now, I'll make a motion that we submit the amended council budget to the full council for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thirty-two B. I'm here again. Jumping over the lawyer thing, 'cause I know you have to leave. Okay, Nicole? We'll get to the attorney fees. If we don't get to it tonight, we still have two weeks, 'cause I can't do a public hearing till March third anyway.
Oh, okay.
On this and the eight hundred dollars that we just approved. Thank you, Barbara.
Just a question, if we're gonna-
If I come back, you're gonna leave?
I, I don't know how long you intend to-
I don't know, JP, so I would say stick around.
All right.
You could sit there, you just don't vote on it. All right. So when I last left, everybody, we were gonna try for an agreement. We have a draft agreement. It's a draft. Um, I know there was some concern from the mayor's side. Does the mayor wanna speak to this draft agreement tonight, or do you wanna wait and see when you guys can get together to finalize it? I do-
I'd like to just-
All right, go ahead.
Um, yes, so I received a draft agreement and reviewed that and sent it to our attorneys who have been assisting with this process. I just got a comment back from them, and plan to share that with the head of IAC before I leave tonight, and hope to set a meeting in the next few days to, to talk forward about that proposal, and where we can go with that.
Okay. You guys wanna say anything else? We've heard a lot, but if you wanna say anything else, you're welcome to. We're gonna vote on this tonight, one way or the other.
Well-
Unless you want not.
Well, I was gonna say, at first, I thought, I thought we were gonna have a definitive interpretation from the law, but it sounds like that's, it sounds like-
She wants to debate it with the committee.
Right, so I mean, I would, I would say, since we're gonna postpone, continue the public hearing until the first week in March, so we could meet again once-
I should let you know that. But go ahead, Mary, did you wanna add something?
Um, the, one, I just got the letter, but also the, the letter that was put forward by the AA, IAC was requesting comment back and conversations directly with them, so I just wanted to get that letter to the IAC, and thought there were parallel tracks around the letter and adoption of twenty-one and twenty-two. One with the other, there will need to be a vote on twenty-one and twenty-two to resolve or, or dismiss, so I just wanna be clear that the letter didn't go to this committee more because that IAC did not have a chance to look, yeah, and I've read it twice, so I'm getting it back.
So, Joe, you wanna wait on a vote? I, I think I'm gonna state my position on this right now, but I will wait on a vote. What do you think, Billy?
I say we, I, I agree with the waiting, see what pans out.
So everybody knows, Councilor McCoy has asked that we continue the public hearing next week. The reason for that is we're down three councilors. This is too important to have absent councilors. I know two of them are in conflict, but if we're gonna have five votes in favor of something, we need at least six votes, or seven people there. So, we're gonna postpone, we're gonna have the public hearing, which means you can come and speak to it, but I'm gonna request that the council continue it until March third. That's when the final vote would be, unless, and I think all of us at the table hope, the mayor withdraws the request because she has an agreement with the IAC. That's where we are. As far as I'm concerned, this is a very difficult decision. If it comes to a vote, I want you to know that I have to go with the taxpayers. I don't want to. I don't wanna vote on this, but I have to go with the taxpayers. If we have liability for labor agreements that cost labor attorney fees, possibility of lawsuits from all the bargaining units because we don't have an agreement, twenty-one and twenty-two, which I think is, I think it's a flawed law, but it's the only thing that protects the city. And I hate to say that to you, because I think you guys do a fantastic job for the city, and I think the IAC is the way to go. I'm really hopeful you can get an agreement, but if you don't have that, this counselor's gonna vote in favor of this agreement. I want you to know that, right now. I could change my mind. But I'd rather, I just want you to know, that's, sign is silly, but on the other hand, the last time we did one of these, minds changed immediately. In any case, the, all the information I have on this tells me that I need to protect the taxpayers. I want you to know where I stood. I think you deserve that, right now. Joe, Bill, do you wanna say anything about that yet?
No.
You know, I mean, I'm just, as far as not voting right tonight, I think there is obviously negotiations going on between the executive branch and the collective bargaining units, so I think we should let that play out, and either they agree or they don't agree, you know, before we would take a vote on what we should do, so.
Well, we have the meeting next week. If you get that far, just a second. If, if you have something by next week, it'd be great to hear from you. Go ahead. You have to go to the podium so people can hear you.
I'm Pat Coon, I'm the chair of the IAC.
Go ahead.
I live in Florence, but I'm also a taxpayer in East Hampton. I rent a business property here.
Oh, good.
Okay. We have a meeting scheduled on the twenty-sixth of February.
Meeting of the IAC.
IAC, and the reason is that historically, we've never been able to get a quorum during school vacation week. Is that? Yeah. So-
Well, I guess you and the mayor have to discuss that. It doesn't, let me say this, March-
March twenty-sixth.
March sixth is the next meeting, after the twentieth. We are not gonna vote on this on the twentieth, we're not gonna present it as recommended either way on the twentieth.
All right.
What I just said was my own opinion, it's not the committee's.
Okay.
So on the twenty, twentieth, we will continue the public hearing. So if you meet on the twenty-sixth with the mayor and you hash it out, or maybe you could have a meeting somehow with representatives, I don't know. That's up to you and the mayor's office. Try to get something done. I'd love to hear from you next week, but if you don't have it by the twentieth, you have until the sixth. We will, councilors, we're gonna have to address this with a recommendation before the sixth, so I don't know, we could bring it up again on the twenty-seventh. We should, we should probably do that. We're gonna have a meeting on the twenty-seventh of the finance committee downstairs, maybe we'll hear something from you before that, if we haven't heard something by the twentieth.
I'm sure we will, if we meet on the twenty-sixth.
If not, we'll, we'll try to figure something.
The day before? Yeah.
Well, right, but maybe you could get him, maybe if you have executive committee or something, meet with the mayor, whatever works for you.
Okay.
Okay, great, and that's what we're gonna do. On the twenty-seventh, we'll make a final vote on this, or maybe it will be moot, we won't have to, which is my hope. Okay, thank you. Sorry to make you all come out tonight. We really hope that you guys, it's better for all people, as far as I'm concerned, if this agreement can be made. Okay? JP, you're up again.
Do you have the major motion to continue it?
No, no, that's, that's me on, that's, on the twentieth, when we have the public hearing. We have to open the public hearing, and then we have to continue it.
Okay, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys, thanks for all your work. Mayor, do you wanna say anything on the fifty thousand before you leave?
She's giving the scissors.
Oh, okay, good. Just briefly on the attorney, I'm assuming you anticipate, and this is for all, attorney's not just a city attorney, it's for all- 'Cause your budget includes labor or negotiator.
Yes, we consolidated last budget season, and in kind of a, a situation where, you know, you build it, they will come, so we're looking at certainly some labor-related costs, but we have additional costs around One Ferry Street, the E Street properly, property, the school project and land, solar projects, and those that were classified under sixty-one A chapter land. We have some legal around the twenty-one and twenty-two, and some consulting work. We have some charter review issues, nothing substantial, but a couple more questions than usual, and the review of the Collins Center report, just a couple of those charter questions that really bumped up legal. I, I feel it's an anomaly for this, this year, just given, yeah, and-
This won't be needed to be repeated next year?
No, there were a lot of pieces of, of just land and easements, especially around the bigger grant applications and pre-contract that we really needed to get settled before we, we went forward. Mass Works on One Ferry Street in particular, and then some work around the school project, and cleaning up who owns what land, and, and how the roundabout figures in with that, as, as well as some legal guidance, so.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the councilors?
Were there opinions that were issued by the attorney in these matters?
There was guidance, and in some, there were opinions that were put forth at the planning board, as well as ZBI. And a lot of that guidance also is in the grant documents that are all posted on the planning website. Both the, right, the application, and then the resulting, so some RFP work, when that was to get ready for that. City space lease.
Do we have a breakdown of the individual expenses?
I can get that.
The billings? I think that before we vote on something like this, we should certainly look at that and get a better handle of what the billings were, the hours, the work that was performed. For the past, we're looking for new budget, I mean, new items for the future expenses. You've exhausted-
Future, right.
You've exhausted your current budget.
I am almost through my current budget.
Yeah.
So when you look at the, what expenditures to date, it looks like we're on course that I should stick within the budget parameters, but we know we have outstanding bills coming at us. So, we started working on the One Ferry project and the school project months ago, that was not in the budget, it just happened to come, I mean, so our expectations of legal for upcoming contract negotiations, which have been put off mutually for a month or so because of the thirty-two B and twenty-one and twenty-two, so we haven't spent those money. We have a negotiation coming up with FIRE as well as DPW Supervisor Union.
The standard contract renewals.
Yep, standard.
When do those get renewed?
Uh, we start negotiations hopefully resolved by July one, and we will start them hopefully in the next week or two.
So the contracts run through July, June thirty?
I believe so. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, if, if-
I don't have a, go ahead, Bill.
JP was still going.
No, I'm, I'm good for now.
Okay.
Um, my, my math, so we, we, the budget that we have right now, we're living the twenty-eighteen budget, right? And it was increased from-
Fiscal year nineteen.
Yep.
I thought you said twenty-eighteen.
No, I'm looking at twenty-eighteen's budget as being-
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars, and this year's budget was increased ninety-four percent, up to fifty thousand dollars, and now we're asking for another fifty thousand, so really the total budget is gonna be a hundred thousand dollars that, that we're gonna supposedly be needing for all of this, and in the previous years, it's been twenty-seven thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty-five thousand, and now we're-
So on page fifty-three of the budget, you'll see that the legal fees that once resided in personnel were, were consolidated.
She combined all the legal fees, so you might be looking at the city attorney fees for-
So, yes, I, yeah.
Yeah, I just, okay, I was just looking at-
Yeah, the increase, absolutely.
The, um-
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-three.
I think it's fifty-three. Oh, keep going.
Fifty-seven, you said.
Page fifty-three.
Fifty-seven. The department description starts on fifty-three.
Okay.
So, you're looking at negotiator, as well as professional services.
So that's a different department than, than in the requested memo?
Yes, so this, this, the, what is on fifty-seven-
Yep.
Was what was proposed under personnel. And we took the money, if, if you look at professional services, negotiation, you'll see there was a requested nineteen, you'll see eighteen, you'll see the requested nineteen, and for our final recommendation to the council, we took those two line items and money out and put them under the mayor.
Got you.
So they-
They moved it from fifteen twenty to fifteen ten?
Right, exactly.
In the budget, okay?
Yes.
So that's where the increase of the fifty thousand is, and now we're looking at, so really, we're still looking at a fifty thousand dollar increase.
If I'm looking, if I may follow up on that?
Sure.
If, if you take page fifty-seven expenses, and you look at the negotiator and the professional services in two thousand seventeen, they totaled the twelve thousand, the twelve thousand twenty, and the, there was no negotiator in two thousand, actual expenditures in two thousand seventeen. Take the twel- twelve thousand twenty and add it to the actual expenditures for city attorney, back on page thirty-nine, that's sixteen, six eighty-one, I come up with twenty-eight seven oh one as our total, new, total expenditures for attorney services, both from the human services account, and I may be mistaken, I, I don't know, just fifty-seven?
So we put money in negotiator, some years we have to use it, some years we don't.
Right.
Given what we're looking at?
This year-
What do you think's gonna happen?
We're gonna need it.
Okay, but I just wanted to get a handle on what-
This year's negotiation-
Right, so the original bu-
We're almost like over three hundred and fifty percent increase between seventeen and nineteen.
And, and Counselor, if I could speak to the projects that I just mentioned-
Yes.
That are unprecedented, as far as One Ferry Street, the Mass Works project.
Ferry Street is an unprecedented project that we'd love to see, love to see-
As is E Street, as is the so, number of solar projects that we have, in particular one that was in chapter land, and there was quite a bit of back and forth between legal, both theirs and ours, about the position of that project, and what could be done or could not be done, and the ramifications to both the applicant, but also the city, of what they would agree with.
Right.
So, we knew there were unusual things coming at us, but those things, like One Ferry Street being granted, the school project, and the roundabout, and who actually owned the land going to in front white book, and the lack of clarity there. We spent a great deal of legal resources to get to our, our personal, our project finance
So I think she said anomaly, and I think, given my history here, this is a very busy year legally, considering that we do have negotiations coming up, maybe even harder ones, and all of these projects.
And the negotiation-
So I can concur.
I would agree, I would agree, it's busy, it's a busy year, and I think it behooves us to look at the actual invoices to date.
We've also changed legal services that were significant, I think the charge structure is significantly different.
The charge, yeah.
Between Jack and the new, and Mark.
If I could also, if you look back further years, twenty seventeen was not a negotiation year, and in past negotiation years, human resources personnel came back for additional money for those negotiations.
I guess we'd have to look at, because the current budget doesn't, doesn't have that force.
Right.
But, you know, there were tough-
What year?
There were tough years where she had to come back for more negotiations, because, because we were having a, we, we couldn't come to an agreement without, some years we've been able to come to agreement without legal counsel, and some years we cannot.
Mm-hmm. Now, the school's legal counsel is not part of this.
The school legal counsel represents the department on school-related issues, but not the, but not the school building.
But that's not coming out of, out of this budget, this line item. That comes out of the school budget, okay.
But the school project comes out, right, school project comes out of the city.
So I, I would, I would like to see those expenses, and I appreciate your offering to submit them.
It's public record.
So if you could submit those, we will vote on this on the twenty-seventh. We'll continue this to the twenty-seventh. I will set a public hearing at our council meeting this Wednesday for the sixth of this item. March sixth.
March sixth, the full council will be the public hearing, but.
For the full council vote. On the twenty-seventh, we will try to do, finish this up and make a recommendation. Bill?
Would that include pending invoices, or whatever? You said there's some that are still not pending.
If we have them, yeah, I mean, whatever we have paid.
Do you want estimates of what she expects them to cost?
Yeah, because, I mean, we're, we're doubling the, the budget, really. It was fifty thousand, now we're going to a hundred thousand. I just wanna make sure, you know, if there's only a few months left in the, the fiscal year, do we need fifty thousand? Maybe we cut it down forty? I don't know, you know?
I, I would have a concern with cutting it down. What is not used goes to free cash, the other is, um, there have been bumps along the road to, so to estimate the legal, I'm certainly, I'll give it the hairy eyeball, but when we're starting to look at easements and very complicated projects, so for the school, um, unpronounced to us, uh, there were, the entrance to White Brook is not the, um, ownership and title and use of that land is not entirely clear, and some of it is in, under parks, and some of it is under city, and that needs to be, um, cleared up. So that's, you know, so I could say it's a thousand dollars, and then we find out a part of the driveway is not where we think, and then it goes to two thousand, or, or whatever it takes. Um, and we have a couple of other legal issues going on with land, so, um, I can give it the best estimate. But, you know, it, it's difficult. That's why the amount is so high.
I got you.
And we have to understand that we've changed our city attorney, uh, that partnership that they have now, their, what is his name?
Bacon, Mark Tanner with Bacon &amp; Wilson.
Bacon &amp; Wilson, it's a, it's a major partnership, so it's gonna cost a little more.
Yeah.
And we also had a legal investigation, um, early on in my term, that was not covered by Maya around hostile work environment, and that was unexpected.
So, I think the word anomaly to me, although it's a happy anomaly, these projects to me are very nice to have, One Ferry Street.
Extremely complicated, but very nice to have.
Complicated, but very nice to have, so, kinda hoping we have more of these projects, actually, but, um, okay, and we have cannabis, I'm assuming there is some cost in there still.
The host, absolutely.
That's brand new, since two thousand eighteen and seventeen, JP, so.
Yep.
There are costs, in, in my view, that.
Well, I'm sure there's a detailed record.
Yeah, that's fine.
When the attorney gets called, or meetings are held, what was, what was discussed?
He gives you a billing record, doesn't he, an hourly record, when he.
Yeah, under the, the ethical canon of the Massachusetts Bar Association, ABA, a timely invoice needs to be submitted, and it's detailed by project, and the nature of if it's a phone call, if it's a meeting, if it's a review.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and with all public records, um, requests, we'll look at the guidelines around redacting of personal information that is exempted, so.
We just wanna see the cause.
Well, I'd like to see.
If it has the.
There may be redacted certain names.
Right, but it's not gonna be a whole bunch of that, but I, I just, you know, we'll put that together. It's a relatively easy request, but there'll be some redaction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll meet on the twenty-seven, twentieth, I'll make a fine, we will set public hearing for this and the eight hundred dollars. We'll also bring forward the council's budget. Okay, guys? Next meeting will be downstairs. Oh, Melissa, sorry.
I, I just wanna ask a question regarding the twentieth. Are you maybe not gonna, depending on what happens on the twenty-seventh, are you gonna definitely postpone on the twentieth to the sixth? Just because I wanna, I wanna bring the right representation on the right day.
Yeah, Counselor Derby will be in Paris, and so I figured it's, we, it's such an important vote, we should have as many people that we can.
So we shouldn't bring this, um, we shouldn't bring Joe Shea and the other people back for a day that you're just gonna say was passed.
No, that's why I announced it tonight, I didn't want the entire MTA here and everybody else
Okay.
for a meeting that, there's no vote.
I just wasn't sure when next week, if there would be a change.
No, next week, we're gonna, we're gonna, the public hearing has to be open, but we're gonna, we're gonna, can't continue it. Somebody comes and wants to speak to it, they have a right to. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Seconded by JP. You seconded, JP.
I seconded, and I voted yes.
Sorry, Tom, wasn't as exciting as you thought.